Welcome, everybody, to this Town Council Work Session where we're going to be discussing the Capital Improvement Program. It is Tuesday, January 5th, 2016, around 6:35, I suppose, right now. First order of business is to pledge to the flag. Please rise and join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And break down to business. Item two on the agenda, as you can see, is the discussion regarding the Capital Improvement Program fiscal year 2016-2017 through 2021-2022. Steve, take it away for us.
Tonight's the first of three nights to review Capital Improvement Program. Tonight, we'll deal with general municipal programs, public services, as well as utility funds. Tomorrow evening, we'll continue, and that will deal with leisure service programs, which would include recreation, open space, as well as senior programming. We'll also look at fair share fees, and we'll look at a wrap-up as to where we're going on the municipal programs. Next Wednesday night, a week from tomorrow, we will have a session with the school department to review the school department's school capital improvement program. There'll also be an opportunity at that time for them to give us some updates as to where they stand in the overall budget development process. So, in starting tonight, we're going to be jumping around within the budget document. I'll try to keep where we are with the page numbers, since what we tried to do is to keep the departments, you know, separate so that they wouldn't be here for two nights in a row. Only the council gets that job. The -- so, let's get started. Why do we develop the Capital Improvement Program? And we talk about this each year. It's to provide a community need statement, and it's a comprehensive statement that attempts to look at all of the varying programs and proposals that need to be considered and prioritized, and determine whether or not resource allocation should be provided for those things. It's to develop a prioritized listing that then the council can sign off on, or just add to or subtract from. It's also to be able to look at what the financial data requirements are, and how do these programs and the cost of the programs fit into the overall budget programs of the community, looking not just at the ability to pay, but also at the need to be able to maintain infrastructure at a high level. The focus of the capital budget is, as I say, to review, to look at the debt management programs, and to identify municipal leave programs, and define where the funding sources are. Because one of the main things that we have to look at in the capital program is are there third-party revenues? Are there grant funds? Are there capital reserve funds set aside to be able to address the various costs of the projects as we move forward? There's also a section that's the pay-as-you-go portion. The pay-as-you-go portion is what we're looking at over the next six years that would fund many of the capital reserve programs. So, you're going to see funding in two places. One, the long-term program, with one of the major funding sources, the annual contributions to get those projects done. We'll see where, in many cases, projects that are of a major cost may be funded over a multiple-year period so that there would not be a spike in funding requirements for a given year. What we're also hopeful is that we can review and update that multi-year program and the various schedules. I think the key in dealing with a capital improvement program is that the first year really are the things that we want to accomplish in the next year. The next five years are really those items that are going to be subject to further review each and every year as we go through the budget process. When we look at road improvements, we may see that we're scheduling, you know, road A, B, C in the 2016 year. It may not be accomplished because another road came up as a higher priority based on a public safety need. All of those different things, what we're attempting to do is to provide a broad need statement, identify really the first-year action items itself, and be able to determine how much funding needs to be put into future years based on major-cost projects. What is the capital facilities? Capital facilities are any of the infrastructure that refers both municipal, school, or utilities that are cost in excess of $10,000. So, let's get started. When we look at the first display of numbers, and that display of numbers is presented on page two of the budget message, it looks at what is the program that we're proposing for '16, '17, and how does it differ from the adopted program that the council adopted for '15, '16? And you can see that there's a number of changes. One of the major changes is that instead of projecting $10.5 million in new bonding, we're looking at 9.55. What we're looking at is that, based on some of the expenses that were incurred this year, starting the school program, that those costs came in significantly less than what had been anticipated by the schools in their need statement. We think that that will continue as we go through multiple years, so instead of the need for $5 million, there'd be a $4 million program over the next six-year period. When we look at the changes in the program funding, leisure service programs showing a major change of $952,000 from what was adopted last year. There's a number of reasons for that. One is, we're projecting an increase in costs associated with the commons project. With that, last year, within the adopted budget, it looked at dealing only with the town portion of the property and not dealing with the entire stretch. Now, we're looking at placing an item in the capital budget that would look at what's the entire cost of the project to be finished as a surfaced pathway. So, that's about a $375,000 change in the program. There's also $130,000 in change with Guild. That change is because we determined the need to put in a new elevator for handicapped accessibility to the programs there. There's a $450,000 increase in the cost associated with the rec center. We'll be discussing that in the commons tomorrow evening. A $45,000 increase in the seniors program, and about a $48,000 reduction in Old Mountain Field. And we'll go through each of those individually so that you have a better handle on it. What we're also looking at is in general municipal programs, about $103,000 in reductions. A lot of that's tied up in revaluation that we're not needing because we're finishing the revaluation this year. So, you can see, there's a number of changes that occur there. On the next slide, on Slide 7, you see the breakout of the pay-as-you-go portion of the budget, which shows the first year for $2,541,000. It's up about $50,000. What we're looking at there is a major reduction in the school fund, funding requirements. That's easily explained in that, two years ago, there was $100,000 to start the one-to-one computer program. In the current year, that changed to a $300,000 program, and for '16, '17, it's being proposed at a $200,000 level. So, there's that, and there's a couple of other computer items that relate to the schools that come up to that $170,000. As we talked about on the meeting on December 14th, the general fund's up about $191,000, and we're going to have to spend some time looking at that in terms of reductions before we get that as a component of the 2016-17-year budget. So, we'll go through each of the detailed items there. It's important to note that while there's increases shown on water and wastewater enterprise funds, none of that has impact on the general fund or property taxes. It all goes through the revenue generated by user fees. So, with that, you end up with an overall capital improvement program that's showing about a $40 million expenditure when we look at the annual funding element and the bonding element, up about $1 million. One of the other things that added $1 million to the overall program was a $1.1 million placeholder for the replacement of water meters in the water system. We had about 3,300 meters. It'll cost about $1.1 million to replace them. Ten years on the existing ones will be up in 2018, '19 year. We've got retained earnings that we pay for those replacements, so it's not looking at any bonding costs, but it's looking at an expenditure with full revenue resources available for it. On Page 8 of the display, this provides a look at each of the detailed programs that we'll be looking at, and explains whether there's changes or whether it's maintaining current levels. Again, these are the projects I've already identified with the bike path, the Guild or Recreation Center, as well as the senior program. One new program that we're seeing in the long-term program this year that's being proposed to you is the Communications Division, and what we're looking at there is looking at the existing plant that we have. The cable system that is used for the 260 businesses in town, as well as the municipal buildings for fire alarm, and is now approaching 50 to 60 years. It's a copper cable system. It is antiquated, and is in need of a serious review. My belief is that there will be a need to replace that system with a modern system which would provide for a wireless connection, and we'll talk about that in some detail. There's positives to that, but the negatives is that there's capital costs associated with the replacement of the headwork that would be necessary at the dispatch center, as well as replacement of the systems within those businesses that use that system. It may be advantageous to them in terms of what their testing requirements would go, as well as being able to determine where trouble was within the building as the fire department gets on scene. But, it's a case where what we'll be proposing in the first year of that program will be to look at moving forward with a study as to what are the options. Many of the cities and towns have moved to a wireless system, and what they would do is to look at a multi-year implementation schedule, so that you would provide the system, you would try to still maintain your copper, hardwire, and look for a specific period of time for the businesses, as well as the municipal facilities, to upgrade their equipment to be able to accommodate the new system. But again, we're looking for about a $25,000 cost there. $20,000 would come out of '16, '17, with $5,000 coming out of the existing facilities, capital reserve for Communications Department. That's what pays for the trucks and those types of activities. Moving along, just in terms of general census information, this is information you're all familiar with from December 14th. We're looking at our general population at around 30,600 as of the census in 2010. We anticipate, based on the growth over that decade, about a 290-person-per-year increase in terms of population. So, best target would be in the 32,000 range at this point, as we move forward. The census information, I've given you this in the past. Some of the growth that was reported between 2000 and 2010 was directly related to the university. So, what you're seeing is the expansion in terms of group housing was up considerably in that year. What happened was URI, when the 2000 census was done, had dormitories that were closed, so they didn't see the bed, so it reduced what the population growth was. So, when you look at it, while we had, you know, approximately a 10% increase in our population over that 10-year term, a good portion of that was directly related to the adjustments that would have occurred in the non-institutional. So, the true growth was substantially less than that 10%. And again, if there's any questions council has on any of the slides, please stop me so we can address it. This information on the median single-family house prices, just for clarification, the $314,000, that's there for South Kingston median, is the average for the seven months of the year through August. When we look at what the prices were in August itself, the prices were up to $352. So, the average is $314 over the seven-month term. The most recent would be the $352. Same holds true with the seven-month average for the state at the $225. It's an average. When we look at the community factors, one of the things that we're always asked is, what is the increase in the tax levy that's required for the average single-family unit? This chart does document what the average assessment value is, as well as what the tax levy requirement is in the increase over the prior year. And as you can see, for the '15, '16 year, the overall increase was about a $31 increase or a .6% increase over the prior year. And over that 10-year period, we're looking at somewhere in the area of almost $700 or about a 1.5%. Questions I always get asked is, well, what does that look like over the past two years, as far as the last five years? And the chart on Slide 13 shows that, overall, the statewide, the averages have been 2.13, where South Kingston, for that same period of time, was a factor of .92. I also, this report was just issued right before Christmas on the '15, '16 tax levy growth, so this wasn't a chart. That was in the previous presentation. But this looks at what did the levy growths go in Washington County for the surrounding communities? And you can see, we were bottomed out at the 1.33 as a percentage increase. North Kingston was up at a 3. Westly, it's 2.6. Charleston, it's 2.4, and Narragansett, almost 2%. So, you can see that, from a county perspective, we're still doing pretty well in terms of being able to maintain and to hold costs. As far as community factors are concerned, here, this looks at what part of the tax base comes from each of the different classes of property. And when we look at classes of property, you see that you've got about 80, almost 84% of every tax dollar comes out of the residential base, about 11.5 cents from the commercials. And you can see that, right now, the motor vehicles are worth about 4.4%, where we call it a flexible tax base, but it's really anything that's subject to the $15.52 tax rate, is almost 50, almost 96%. So, a goodly portion of our dollars come from the residential base, which is not atypical to suburban communities, where there are limited industrial or commercial activities. When we look at Page 15, this was a projection that we made on December 14th, where we were looking at about a 5% increase, 1% in terms of natural growth or new construction, and 4% based on what we're seeing with the revaluation. I will probably need to drop that down when I present the operating budget to you. The natural growth is looking closer to a half a percent than a full percent, which will have some impact as far as what tax effort requirements would be as we go forward. But again, I haven't seen anything from the revaluation company. It's just a projection based on what the Waring Group that provides us with estimates statewide on value increases has suggested may be coming forward. Hopefully, we'll have some of the revale preliminary data before the budget, operating budget is issued to you for March 1st. The taxable role, as presented on 16, again, looks at what's coming from tangible taxes, as well as land and building. And the motor vehicles is just a different way of looking at it in terms of the taxable property. Again, if we, in terms of basic numbers, for every million dollars in new value, you pick up $15,500 in taxes. So, if you had 40 million coming in, you'd have about $620,000, which is probably what overall growth could be at a half a percent, at a full percent. Going forward, 17 documents what the share ratio is as far as the residential unit in terms of taxes going to school versus taxes going on the municipal. Hasn't been a lot of change there. It's been relatively constant over the past 10-year period. Next chart on the 18 looks at unemployment. I presented the chart in two ways here. One is to look at what it was on an annual basis, going back for the 10 years, and the top chart shows the percentage. The bottom shot documents the spread between people looking for jobs and people that are employed. So, we've seen some major good news as far as employment getting back to where it had been prior to the recession. We're looking at, I also wanted to present, because it's very choppy, I wanted you to look at a, really, almost a two-year window as to what the monthlies were. So, you can see, they're up and down, but consistently, they are coming down. So, I mean, on a straight line, we still are on the decline, which is what we would want to see as far as unemployment factors. One of the things I did look at, too, with unemployment was to see whether or not the number of people looking for jobs, as well as people in jobs, was not decreasing. But we're still seeing an increase in the number of employable, both employed and looking for work. So, that's a good sign, too. So, we're not seeing people who are stopping, looking for work at this time, that are actively out for a full-time job. But again, you can see with those, there's a good deal of change on a month-to-month basis. Some of that's because of seasonal influx of jobs, particularly in our area, associated with terrorism, that you'll see lesser numbers, and then it drops off. Moving on, on 19. 19 is a new chart this year that looks at Washington County, because I get a lot of questions on, how do we relate in terms of our tax base to other communities? I'm not going to go into detail with it, but I think it's an interesting chart for the council to be familiar with, in terms of the percentages by class of taxes, as well as by class in terms of taxable property. And I think probably some of the more important information that's here that really relates to capital budgeting is the issue with the bond rating and the debt levels. When you look at our bond rating, we're the only community in Washington County that has a AA1 bond rating. All of the other communities are AA2. I think what gets us to the AA1 is when you start looking at the debt levels. Our debt level as of the 2014, '15 year, and this was the most recent year I could get data that was statewide, was at 17.3 million. You can see, North Kingston's debt is up at $49 million, where Westly's up at 85. A lot of this is new school constructions that have occurred. Charleston is relatively low at the 4.8, and Narragansett's in excess of South Kingston's at 21. And when you look at, one of the things that is an important indicator is the per capita debt level, and you can see we're well below our neighbors, and the ratio to the adjusted gross income of the community is also in a very good position. These are things that are going to make a difference as far as rating agencies, and what's of interest is that, if we go back 10 years, our debt levels were probably closer to the 38, $39 million levels, almost $40 million once we had built the Broad Rock School. We've done, I think, an excellent job in debt repayment of principal to be able to get these levels down, and we'll see more charting on that as we go forward. As far as the municipal budget, the budget trends, on Page 21 of the capital budget, you've got all five years. Here, I've only got a two-year layout, but I think it gives you a pretty good idea as to what things are changing over the past five years. You can see, from a revenue perspective, we've gone from about 88.2 to 89.2 as far as the share of the budgets that are going to, going from property taxes. What we're also seeing is that we've made a concerted effort to reduce the amount of fund balance that's being forwarded to pay down the budget expenditures from 1.2 down to $675,000. I think some of the, one of the things I just mentioned was the debt and how we've reduced that debt. You can see that debt service has declined by almost $2 million over that five-year period. What that's done is provided an opportunity for us to get the debt level down, so that the projection for funding of another $9.55 million, bringing that into the market over the next six years, is possible and still stay at a relatively low debt level. It also means that we will see increases in what the debt service requirements are on an annual basis. One of the things we will be doing this year is introducing a debt service fund. Council provided approval on this earlier this year. What that provides us with an opportunity to do is to be able to provide a more limited increase in the annual amounts of debt service that will be paid for school and for municipal bonds, so that we may be over-appropriating in one year and under-appropriating in the next year, so that there's no spike in the debt service levels. So, we will look at that as we get into the operations budget as we go forward in March. The budget trends, the second page of it, on Page 21, also talks about where the changes have been. You can see that, overall, you've got about a $3 million increase in the overall budget in the general fund over the five-year period. But when you combine the school and the municipal budgets together, the general fund and the school fund, you see that the overall increase is about $33,990 per year. Why? Because there's been substantial revisions in terms of school programming for, as they've lost revenues from the state with the new funding formula, and a reduction in the enrollments within the schools. The share still, at this point, is going up for the municipal share on the tax distribution, where it's about 22.2 five years ago, and we're up to 24%. And that's because of some of the losses, as noted in the previous page, from state aids that we would be getting in. Some of the aids that we're getting in from the state are showing increases, but they're increases based on commodity sales here. It's coming from the hotel tax, and it's coming from the food and beverage tax, where we're seeing increases in the number of restaurants, increases in the tourism, is generating more dollars for us, but those are dollars that are just passed through from the state. It's not as if they're giving us more. The only way we're getting it is that those businesses located in South Kingston are generating better business practice and better sales, which then works to the benefit. And that's one of the keys. When you look at, you know, you look at the property tax, you say, well, there's only 11% coming from commercial. That may be true, but when you take in the $800,000 that's coming in from the restaurants, and the $300,000 that's coming in from the hotels, that's another big number that's generated based on your commercial base that sometimes goes unnoticed, because it's all coming to the bottom line. Moving along, and I'm trying to move relatively quick, because I've got 110 slides, so I don't want to be here till 3:00 in the morning with you, but if I'm going too slow, tell me. If I'm going too fast, tell me. The six-year term, this chart here on Page 22 looks at what the adopted program was to the six-year program, and then major sources of revenue that are going to pay for those. So, you can see, you've got 9.5 million that'll be going from bonds. You've got, when we talk about undefined sources, those are things where we're looking for grants, third-party dollars. Secured funds are monies that would be in capital reserve funds that are available for commitment, or some of the capital reserves are in our recreation fees, or the school fees, or looking at fees, or looking at open space fees. Those are all dollars that would be used to pay down the cost of these programs. So if there's no question with that, I'll go forward. What we're looking at on the slide twenty-three is when would we be issuing bonds? If all of the projects that are in the capital improvement program are approved as presented, we would be looking at issuing six-point-one-five million dollars in the sixteen century. That would probably be in the May-June of two thousand and seventeen with the issue. We would then be looking at an additional million in June of nineteen, a million four, and that would be with another school for a million and four-hundred thousand for road improvements. And the last one on two thousand and twenty-one would be sold in two thousand and twenty-one. Each of those are subject to where the different projects are. Do they go into construction as quick as been anticipated? If they're slower, we would slow the entry into the market. As a, for instance, in the current year, the capital budget that was adopted showed the six-point-one million dollars being put into the market in June of this year. Because the rec center has not gone forward, we're not looking to need that money, and we wouldn't bond it in advance of the project. And same holds true with the schools. If you saw in reading of the capital budget, one of the things we had recommended is that we cut a million dollars in bonding needs for school purposes where they could use fund balance that they have in their school fund so that we don't have to borrow the money. Anytime you don't spend a million dollars in the bond, you're not going to pay the interest over the next twenty years. So if they've got available in their undesignated or unassigned fund balance, we've made recommendations that they've agreed with to be able to move that forward, which allows me to recommend the revision down to the nine-million-five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Going forward, we've identified each of the projects that would be subject to bonding as well as the referendum dates. We're looking at that nine-million-nine-fifty that we just talked about. I want to spend a couple of minutes as far as the, and this starts on page fifty-five if you want to look at it in the capital budget, is to look at where have we been and where are we going as far as debt level is concerned. And you can see that when we go back to two thousand and ten, what we were looking at is about a thirty-million-dollar debt level. We've paid off fifteen-point-nine million dollars of that debt so that as of June of two thousand and fifteen, we're down to seven-point-two million dollars. That's a fifteen-point-eight million dollar reduction of forty-seven percent. Normally, what the bond market is looking at is amortization of debt at fifty percent over a ten-year period. We've met that goal in a five-year term based on the schedules that we put together. Some of that is also directly related to refinancing of bonds for us to be able to accelerate the payment of the principal as we changed what the bond schedules were going to be. So I think this is very good news where it shows that we're down to the fourteen. And as I say, when you go back into two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, we're up close to the forty-million-dollar level if I recall. The slide.
Can I comment on that? I want to say, I found very interesting one of the answers, thirty, two thousand and ten. It's whether it was refinanced or paid down, it's been cut by like fifty-five percent. That's incredible. That's really outstanding.
Well, I think that we've been able to meet those needs, but the other key here is that there's been no new bonds introduced during that period of time. So all you're doing is you're paying down rather than adding to. So that's why we want to take a look at, well, what happens if we do nothing? Let's say we say we're not bonding anything for the next, you know, the next six years. If that was the case, you can see on slide twenty-six that you would go from twelve million dollars, which is what will be where we are at the end of the existing fiscal year, down to about two-point-eight million dollars townwide. So what this provides for is it's an opportunity to look at what are the infrastructure projects that need to be done that would need bonding assistance? This gets us back to the nine-point-five million dollars that's being proposed for introduction. And again, last year it was ten-point-five million, this year nine-point-five over that six-year period. And we've been able to extend it out based on last year to a seventh year because we were able to hold back those projects one more year. I did have a note on my page here, two thousand and six was our highest debt level. We were at forty-one million, seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. And we were able to, you know, maintain those budgets at that point. But going back to two thousand and six, we were also looking at increases in property taxes in the four to five percent range. So we certainly don't want to get back to that, but, you know, forty-one million was a number that still was a safe number for us as far as bonding purposes and relationship to overall taxes. It was probably in the seven percent of the tax dollar. But as we've gone forward, we've been able to really minimize that. So what do we do if we do have new debt that's going to be put into the market? If we're going to put new debt into the market, I would jump to slide twenty-eight. Slide twenty-eight takes the same chart that you just saw on that previous page and takes it with the nine-point-five million dollars integrated over the six-year period with three separate bond issues. The first one in seventeen, the second one in nineteen, and the third one in twenty-two. And what we're attempting to do is to minimize where the spikes are. And you can see the two thousand and seventeen year, because you're bringing in the five-point-five million dollars in debt, you're going to spike back up to sixteen million. That also means the debt service requirements to go up. So what we need to look at is what do we do in the sixteen-seventeen year to minimize that? And some of that is that we would use, you know, our appropriation as far as debt service to try to take care of that, because you're going to have the debt service, you're going to put the money into, the debt into permanent financing in seventeen, but you're going to pay debt service, first debt service payments in eighteen. So this just looks at what's the debt level going to be for the community for each of those years. So even with adding the nine-point-five million, you're going to go from twelve million down to ten-point-five million going out those six years. So you're going to end up below where you are now, even though you're going to introduce the nine-point-five. All of the debt that we issue is forecast on a four percent interest, which is higher than what we would be selling for today. And it's also based on a equal principal payment. When I say equal principal payment, it's not like your mortgage where the amount of principal you're paying each month declines as the amount of, on your payment and the interest changes. What we're doing is we're saying on a million dollars, fifty thousand dollars a year is paid back over that twenty-year period. And that way, by the time we get to the very end in the nineteenth and the twentieth year, instead of there being a starting point of, let's say ninety, it would be ninety thousand dollars in the first year on a repayment of a million dollars, it would be down to fifty-five thousand. By doing it that way, as you integrate additional debt in, there's a declining debt that's trailing behind it. That way, you keep your costs on a balance rather than spiking. So this is what the debt level would look like were we to implement the capital improvement program, long-term bonding as presented in the document. Now, when we talk about debt service, which is required to pay for the debt that we've just borrowed, we have to look at where does that money come from? Well, it comes from two places. One, the major source is going to be a property tax. And two, it's going to be third-party revenues. When we look at third-party revenues, there's some that provide substantial assistance. State housing aid is available for health and safety projects that have been approved. Right now, with the study that was done two years ago, it was approved by the state for about six-point-five million dollars in refunding availability on six-point-five million dollars in projects. We only have about five million dollars that we've put forward for the schools because a lot of the other million and a half dollars, if you will, are dollars that are more of an operational nature. They're really not capital, and they shouldn't be, they should be funded through their operating budget. But that will give us a thirty-five percent reimbursement. So we'll get thirty-five percent of the interest and principal reimbursed on any of the school bonds that are issued, and we're talking about issuing four million dollars in bonds at this point. The second item to look at is fair share fees. Page fifty-eight in your document gives you a summary of the fair share fees, which I think is an important detail, because what we're looking at is, well, how are we going to use fair share fees? We can only use them for new projects, and they can only be used for new capital projects. So if you look at page fifty-eight, I don't have a slide of that, but I just wanted to identify it with the council. One of the things that we were looking at here on page fifty-eight was we would be having the transfer of one-point-two-five million that would go toward the community center. We were also looking at the annual debt service that would be paid for, continue to be paid for on the Green Hill Park. When we negotiated the acquisition of that property and the construction of that facility, the bonds that are outstanding, we're using rec fees to be able to pay down that debt service. You can also see there's several other projects. There's Old Mountain Field, there's the Commons Project. The Commons Project is showing there in nineteen-twenty. One of the things that we'll see tomorrow night in my presentation will be that with the council's approval, we agreed to put the Commons Project into a, into the tip and attempt to get state funding for that entire project. We forecast that, I think it was at about six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. What we need to do is to provide leverage on that from a state perspective with local funds. So what we can do is, because we've got the funds available within the rec fees, we could move that schedule and take it out next year and have them available next year. So what I've said to Ben Murray is, in preparation of that tip, show that project, but also show it with between a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fees that would be available as a means of collaborating with the state so that they get more bang for their buck on the project. So we don't think, and because that project is shovel-ready, it could be well-received with the tip. Secondly, we're expecting that in March, there'll be about four million dollars in new recreation bond funds that'll be made available for both large and small projects. If we can't get tip, then we will continue to market that project with that, with the bond fund. I think that there is potential for both of those funding sources, but I think that the availability of the fees may allow us to be able to accelerate. If we can't get the third-party funding on it, then we're not going to be able to move that project based on the prioritization that's been provided by the Recreation Commission as rapidly as we would if we can get those third-party funds. As far as the neighborhood guild, there's a million dollars that's in the schedule to be borrowed for the guild. That million dollars will have no property taxes associated with it. It will be paid for through the guild's endowment funds. So that has a no-cost factor to it, but it's within your debt, it's within the debt level that we're looking at. Diane Drive, when we put the sewers in there, we borrowed a half a million dollars that's being paid back through assessments on the people that received the sewers. Real estate conveyance taxes, we've got two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars a year that goes into open space projects. That, we look at it spending about seventy-five thousand dollars a year in new projects, and what we look at is paying the debt associated with some of the open space acquisitions, particularly the Noyds Farm acquisition, which was a three-million-dollar bond issue that we issued several years ago. So all of those sources are being used to be able to pay down what the requirements would be from property tax. Superfund, those are still being paid for through, superfund, we had to have two-point-nine million dollars, two-point-nine-five to be exact, of bonds to close out those two landfills, West Kingston and Rose Hill. One was in two thousand and two, was the two-million-dollar one, and the two thousand and nine with West Kingston. We're servicing both of those debt amounts by income coming out of the transfer station. So there's no tax dollars coming there as well. So you can see the third-party revenue is an important component in measuring debt and ability to pay for the, for the community. One of the questions we get asked is, if we do spend all of this money, how much of it's coming out of tax base and how much of it is coming out of third-party? And you can see, we're looking at the guild and the percentage coming from the school bonds. That would be the thirty-five percent that would be available to pay down that debt service. The chart on the lower end of this, this page thirty indicates that if we continue to see a one percent growth in the value of homes, and we take the tax rate that's associated with debt service today and compare it to what the debt service requirement would be in two thousand and twenty-one, we would see about an eighty-eight dollar, or a twenty-one dollar reduction. This is because we're going from a larger number now to a smaller number as we go forward. Again, the caveat is you're talking about a calculated, calculation that is a projection of one percent, and you're also assuming that you're having a two percent annual increase in the levy. If those two factors don't happen, that twenty-two dollars could disappear very quickly. But again, this is to be able to provide financial forecast rather than to say that this is specifically what's going to occur. Moving on to thirty-one, the debt service as a percentage of the tax levy. You can see that when we look at our debt service as a percentage of the tax levy, it's at three-point-four percent gross, but take off what you're getting in third-party revenues and you're down to two percent. So what we're saying is, two cents of every tax dollar would be associated with our debt. It's going to climb up to two-point-one-two when we get into the seventeen-eighteen year, which is the first year of debt service requirements on the debt that would be issued in two thousand and seventeen. Moving on to thirty, page thirty-two, we can see the bonded debt, this was the bonded debt as a percentage of the tax base, and you can see we're well below standards. Moody's looks at a triple-A community at a point-six and double-A at about a point-nine-eight. So we're well below that factor. We were up as high as seven-point-seven-one percent in two thousand and ten, but that has, or I should say, seven-point-seven percent back in two thousand and ten. So there's been a considerable decline in that. Financial considerations on chart thirty-three is the per capita debt. I've already talked about that. This, however, is going forward based on the debt loading of the nine-point-five million, where you can see we'll jump in sixteen-seventeen and then decline thereafter. The next chart, we look at debt service, per capita debt as a percentage of income. In two thousand and thirteen, at the state level, it was about five-point-nine percent. So we're well below that, and that was based on two thousand and twelve income. So it's very difficult to get comparative data on this, but when we look at it, our ratios are substantially less than what any of the bonding agencies are forecasting as an area of concern that would jeopardize our rating. Thirty-five, page thirty-five looks at the debt service as a percentage of operating revenues. Again, I think this is, you can see the debt service to our overall budgets is within line of where it should be. One of the interesting things I'd mention too is that Moody's always wants to know what the top ten taxpayers are paying in the community as a percentage of the total levy. Our top ten are about three-point-five percent of the tax roll. Anything below eight percent is considered good. Why are they looking at the top ten? Because the fear always is that if you had one or two taxpayers that were holding eight to ten percent of your tax roll and they decided to leave town, it would have a considerable impact. In fact, we ran into that problem a couple of years ago with APC when a great deal of the inventory left, and we went from about ninety million dollars in tangible value down to of the inventory left, and we went from about $90 million in tangible value down to $10 million roughly. And that was over a three-year period. They worked with us to be able to step it down. But you have to always be cognizant of where those large taxpayers are and whether or not they're stable within the community. So that's something else that we look at, and I think it's also important for us to continue to have dialogue with our larger industries, whether it's Snyder Electric, the university, or the hospital, as well as the municipal government. Undesignated fund balances also, or unassigned fund balance, every few years, the accounting offices change how they define. Now it's unassigned rather than undesigned. But the unassigned fund balance at this point, as of 2015, was about 9.962 million, or 13 percent of the budget. Our target, based on past policy adoption, is to have that in the area of between 10 and 16 and a half percent. So we're right within our target range. When I forecast going forward, my forecast here is different than what I gave you. Once we close the fiscal year, we're looking at 15, 16. I was using a number of 1.4 million. I still think that's valid, but I'm going to drop that down to 900,000. We'd also used a $250,000 increase in the need for the rec center and dropping that down to 200. We'd also talked about, in the capital budget on the page 65, that we were showing 600,000 coming from fund balance, and now we're showing 550. So just with those adjustments, we're still staying in the 13 percent range with all of those activities occurring. I think it's really important for us to get undesignated fund balance down, that's financing the future year programs, because from an accounting standpoint, that isn't considered a revenue. So that means that if we finish a budget, if we have 600,000 budgeted as a revenue coming in from fund balance, and we finish the budget without a $600,000 surplus, from an accounting standpoint, they would look at that as being income below what expenditures were, even though you'd have the fund balance. But that's not something that we want to see in terms of our commercials, in terms of presentation. Moving on.
Steve.
Yep.
Do we earn any returns on the unassigned fund? Do we keep that?
I'm sorry.
Do we keep that in any type of investment vehicle, any of the unassigned fund balances?
She invests everything that she's got.
All of our funds.
Where are those revenues reflected in the?
I think during the current year, overall investments on the general fund were worth about, we budgeted 80, I think you came in at 100?
155,000.
155,000. But recognize that investments at this point, we're looking at, what are you getting at this point?
Probably about .4. Some are as high as .65, and some are as low as .3.
Interesting. There were years where we were generating well over a million dollars in investment income, based on the fact that the investment rates were so good. But obviously, if those investment rates go up, it's going to have other impacts on us just as well. So, it's not a major contributor to the budget, but it's certainly something that we do see. All of our funds are, you know, we use the general fund, all of the other funds, all of the capital reserves, all of that money's invested. It's the same way, I mean, we may have as much as $40 million in investments at any given time. The next sheet on page 37 takes a look at, what does it mean to have a bond rating of AA1? And you can see, are we typical across Rhode Island, New England, and US? What we see is, most of the AA1s are a much smaller population grouping than South Kingston. They're in at about 16,000 in New England. When we go out globally for the United States, we're essentially to the same dollar amount, as far as census is concerned. When we look at the size of our budgets and the general fund, the percentage of revenues balance, you can see that we're relatively typical of all of those communities that are AA1. This is important information when we start looking at, you know, the top 10 taxpayers and what the direct debt outstanding is. We're lower, in some cases, than what other AA1s are, not just in Rhode Island, but... So I think this is a good report card, if you will, as to where you, as a community, stand in terms of financial capabilities. That's the financial presentation that I needed to put as a foundation as to where we're going from there. So now we start with the long-term projects. And if we jump to slide number 40, slide number 40 is referenced on page 39 of your budget, and this is, we'll deal with the general government projects. Information technology, information technology touches every department in many, many different ways. And one of the things that we've been able to do over the past three years is to really provide for an entire redevelopment of our information technology systems with the network equipment, and we've got to continue to move forward with that. In 1617, you know, we're looking to have about a $60,000 investment in terms of network equipment and $50,000 to upgrade office. We're still using Office 2007. There's been three upgrades since then. To do that upgrade for all of the units that are here, we're looking at going out to a cost of around $50,000. And this is one of the reserve funds, capital reserve funds that we use with this type of equipment. Next year, they'll be looking at, you know, virtualization hardware. All that means, it's not hocus pocus. What it really is, is just being able to take one piece of hardware and be able to section it off and have different operating systems so that it provides greater redundancy, so that you're not having all of your needs being serviced through one piece of equipment that if it goes down, you lose everything. Replacements on, and we're looking at virtual desktop. Virtual desktop really means that you get rid of the box at the table, and the box really is at the mainframe itself. It starts at the network. It'll provide greater efficiencies, it'll create greater flexibility, and we'll also have to deal with upgrades of our exchange server going out in the 1920 year. None of these things are done based on the schedule. These are targets that we expect, and we're not going to do the changes until we need the changes. In the current year, you've got a couple of projects that are ongoing. The 1516 is, for instance, you just approved the web redevelopment, and what we're looking at is, the next project that'll be done this year would be installation of a new telephone system in municipal offices, which will be a voice-over internet protocol system, which should provide us with opportunity to substantially reduce some of our third-party service costs with the telephone companies. So all of this technology is necessary. It's also necessary for us to be able to continue to run all of the multiple softwares that were acquired over the last three years. So, we're going forward with this type of a schedule of items, and we expect that on a yearly basis, we will evaluate this. You may see items shift around based on what the IT director feels is the most important need at a given time. Page 41 shows that we're looking at, we've got about $170,000 in the reserve fund balance. That's there, so if we have to do something on an emergency basis, that we have it. We're looking at the $155,000 in pay-as-you-go coming in. We're looking at grants that we're expecting, as well as expenses. So you can see, what we're looking to do is to spend probably about $280,000 over that multiple-year period. If there's no questions, I'll go into revaluation. Just to remind everybody, we are doing a revaluation as of December 31st of 2015. So the values that were booked as of last week will be used for the budget that's being developed for the 2016-17 year. We are anticipating that we've got full funding here. We're going to have to look at a full revale that's going to be necessary in 2020, 2021. We've got sufficient dollars for the 1819 year, but we'll have to start funding probably in the 2020-2021 year to fund for that full revaluation. Something that I think will occur prior to that full revale being scheduled is there will be a schedule change on a state basis that will probably change from this three-year schedule to a five-year schedule. Technology being what it is, the adjustments that can be made on a statistical usually can provide some pretty good estimates as to value for the entire tax base, unless there's some substantial changes in the market over a given period of time. I think what we're finding is that, on a three-year basis, we're spending more money than is necessary to be able to come up with good numbers as far as proper value. We're not seeing the appeals. When we would do a revale 20 years ago, you would have, you know, many, many appeals of value. We're not seeing that in the last couple of revales that have occurred. The next item is the Transportation Improvement Program. It starts on page 41, and this is all of John's projects. John, you want to come up for us? I'm going to ask John to walk you through his projects. Give me a couple of minutes, get my voice back. You want to talk about the program as we've got it, John?
So, since 2000, that's when we started our Transportation Improvement Program, our TIP program. And primarily, the first 10 to 12 years, we focused on full-depth reclamation. And now we've started it, which is the most expensive means for road reconstruction. And now we've transitioned away from that. We've got the, I guess, the lack of better terms, the bad roads done. And now we've gone more to an overlay program, which we can get a lot more roads done at that point. We still will do some selective full-depth reclamation. We did some on Sogatuckett Road, which we recently did. So if we have areas where there's poor soils, we still have to get down and resolve the subsurface soil issue. But now we've pretty much transitioned to pavement overlay at this point. So with that...
Yeah, the difference in cost is about $40 on the overlay to about $90 on the full construction. And it just seems as if we're spending far more money than we need to if there's a proper road base that's in place.
The only downside with overlay is what's called reflective cracking. If you see cracks that are there now, we do crack seal it before we overlay, but those cracks will migrate back through the fresh pavement at some point. But it's simply a case, we just can't afford to do full-depth reclamation every road. So that's pretty much the road portion. We're still dealing with stormwater, TMDLs, Total Maximum Daily Load. We've already authorized an engineering consultant, Fuston O'Neil, they're working on doing stormwater. We call them BMPs, Structural Improvements, Best Management Practices in the Narrow River Watershed. And those will probably go to construction if we're lucky with permitting in the upcoming year. It's more than likely going to be the following year, because we have to get CRMC and DEM approval for those. And again, the goal is to reduce pollutants in the water body for, the goal is to make it fishable, swimmable again, and meet water quality standards. However, the jury's still out if we're going to be able to do that or not.
Provide a better definition on the TMDLs.
Yeah, TMDLs is, it's called, it's Total Maximum Daily Load. And what it means is, the amount of pollutants a water body can withstand to make it fishable, swimmable, and meet water quality standards. So, they want us to remove, the DEM, the EPA wants to remove pollutants to the greatest extent possible to hopefully get the water body back to fishable, swimmable in accordance with the water quality standards. Again, whether we're going to be able to do that or not, I question, I think whatever we do do, it will help reduce the pollutant loads, but it's yet to be seen if we make, you know, meet water quality standards once we're done.
John, did they set a timeframe for when they expect us to meet that standard?
Well, we've got, I believe, eight TMDLs in the town now. It's going to be a multi-year, and I mean multi-year, probably two decades' worth of improvements. We're starting again on the oldest TMDL, which is Narrow River, and I believe the next one is Green Hill Pond. We'll jump over to that one. And I think the third one is Sogatuckett River, which is probably going to be the most difficult one of all the TMDLs to try to deal with.
DEM understands that it would take literally $100 million to try to address all of the TMDLs that we have in town. But what we've got is an agreement with them that we will target about $100,000 a year to be set aside in the reserve, because none of these projects are going to be done cheap. So we need to have the dollars set aside. As John said, we're moving forward to do the first one with Narrow River. But there's a real question on whether you could ever meet what the TMDL levels are, even before man started frequenting that river. Based on what the animal population is, that contributes to some of the pollutions that are there. But what we're looking at is that we need to assign dollars on a yearly basis. This year, we're not proposing the $100,000 this year, because we've got the funds that are necessary, and we'll pick that back up in the 1718 year.
Now, the drainage situation on Kingston Road, where we're talking about a TIP project for putting in the sidewalks over by the police station, well, does that have anything to do with this?
Yeah, typically, I mean, the big problem when you put sidewalks in, typically you have to put a vertical face curb, and you're then in pounding water. So you typically have to deal with the drainage, or how to deal with the drainage before you can move forward with sidewalks. So, that's all going to be integrated into a sidewalk project. RIDOT is going to have to determine what, if anything, can be done to manage the stormwater. Right now, it sheet flows off in some places. Once you put the sidewalks in, you lose that capability. But this is, again, this is more of a pollutant loading type of issue. Again, we just, actually Josh and I met with DEM and RIDOT today about trying to deal with the stormwater issues on High Street to get the High Street job done. So any new project that's roadwork is going to have to deal with reducing the pollutant loadings from the drainage stormwater systems.
And sometimes those costs become more expensive than the construction of the roads themselves. So it's an issue, and that's something that we have to deal with as a component of this overall program.
The next element's bridge and dams. We're, after California Jim, I think, breached in 98, we went through and reconstructed all our earthen dams in town. Some of the recent work you've probably seen is on the Main Street Fish Ladder. That was actually done by the state in Noah, and that work just wrapped up this week. So I think of all of our infrastructure, the dams are in pretty good shape right now. Last is highway division, our equipment and facility improvements at the Ace of Pond Complex.
Yeah, and we'll go to those as we go along. The overall program that we're looking at, for all of his projects, and this is exclusive of equipment, over the next six years would be $5.5 million. What that means is that we'll have, on an annual basis, between $650,000 and $700,000 in need each year to continue to feed the different projects that are listed here. There's also a listing in the capital budget that shows the roads that we anticipate doing over the next five years, and we'll get to that when we get into the pay-as-you-go portion of the budget. of the budget. This is the listing on page forty-five. Slide forty-five shows you the projects that we're anticipating doing. You've got Matunik Beach Road from Route One down to Cods Pond for two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Moonstone Beach from Route One to Old Post for the two hundred and eighty-two, and so forth. And you can see there's a number of the roads that are in the outer years. On an annual basis, this chart is updated because what public services will do is they'll go out and to check these roads, and if there's other roads that are found to be more deficient than these, the prioritization may change. Certainly, what we find is that the more roads that we do, the more anxious neighbors to those roads become to see their roads serviced. This is a program that we could spend a great deal more money on, but I think that it's a program that, when we look at resource allocations, this is as much as I think we can afford on this type of service. And I do think our infrastructure is in far better shape than communities that aren't doing this type of planning. This may be cumbersome to have, you know, a hundred and fifty pages worth of a capital budget, but I think that it's important for you to understand what the infrastructure needs are and then whether or not we can afford to fix them. And I think as long as we can stay ahead of that, there'll be less liability claims that will come against the town. Moving ahead, we're going to, we're going to deal with John's projects again, but I want to just, you can sit there because we're going to be, it's only going to take you a couple of minutes with this. Why don't you stay? On the police, the police programs, there's three programs. Chiefs here, if there's any questions that I can't address, but there's three specific programs that we're looking at on page forty-nine. We have a reserve for computers, systems. Obviously, there's a great number of computers that are in the police department's operation as well as within the police vehicles themselves. Those have to be replaced on a timely basis. There's a schedule that's developed that goes on for about ten pages of what the inventory is, what its year life is, and what its expectancy is. What we look at is what is a reasonable expectation of what will be needed on an as-need basis for replacement over the course of the year. Same thing with communication systems. We're going to have those types of needs that are going to be addressed. We look at the communications system on page fifty-one of the handout. Facility-wide, we're dealing with the closed circuit television, and we're dealing with the workstations for the dispatch center, as well as the recording and playback functionality and their systems for telephone and fire alarm. All of these things need dollars held in reserve to be able to ensure that that equipment stays a hundred percent in operation. So there's an annual funding requirement on that. When we get to the pay-as-you-go, we'll talk more about that. Building facilities, it's hard to believe, but the police station now is, the old police station is now nineteen ninety-eight. We can't call it the new station any longer. And John's building, I'm not sure whether that's the ancient old police station.
The first police station ever built.
But again, we need a reserve fund that's there that'll deal with the HVAC needs, particularly as well as as the building gets older, dealing with roof issues. We've made considerable efforts in terms of energy efficiency on that building over the last three years. Most of that's been paid for through grant funds, and we're seeing the benefit of that in terms of reduced energy uses that are occurring. As far as all of our attention on energy, right now, we're looking at, we've just signed for another project that will be done at the Highway Department to deal with the lighting for the gas bays that are, that are set up outside where the lights are on twenty-four seven. With this, it'll give us motion detection and LED lighting to be able to reduce what those needs are. So we're continuing to do those types of things, but the police department has been one of the most proactive in terms of energy, energy management projects within their building infrastructure fund itself. They've leveraged the dollars from National Grid in an appropriate manner. So when we get done with the police summary, we're looking at overall about four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in anticipated expenditures over the six-year period, with four hundred and fifty of that coming from within the pay-as-you-go portion of the budget. And we'll get to that when we get to pay-as-you-go. EMS, EMS is a division that is going to have various needs. They include vehicle replacements, and vehicles are in the two hundred thousand dollar range. They're looking at medical equipment that's necessary on each of the vehicles, as well as the computer equipment that's necessary both in-station and within the rolling stock, as well as facility improvements. One of the things that is underway at this point is, two years ago, we looked at an upgrading of the old police station or John's offices to provide for demolition of the garage area to be able to better accommodate the size vehicles that are used for both heating purposes of those vehicles during the winter or cooling purposes during the, during the summer months. What we did was we had construction documents prepared, went out to bid, the bids were rejected because they were far too high. One of the reasons was that they included the development of a generator, and they included the upgrade of the entire electrical system of the building that had been constructed in nineteen fifty-eight. What that meant was that general contractors were concerned on what the electrical component and generator was going to add, and they put in high numbers. On John's recommendation, we went forward and stripped the project to be in two phases. First phase was the installation of the generator and dealing with the electrical needs. That was done over the past year. In fact, we finished that project this last summer. What we're now looking at is to be out to bid on the removal of the garage bays and the reconstruction of those garage bays. Right now, there's about three hundred and fifty thousand or so dollars, I don't have the number in front of me, that's available for that project. If it comes in higher than that, we're going to have to look at that. It's not included in this budget because it should be completed in the current fiscal year. There are no plans for us, one of the things that we looked at was the feasibility of a building addition that would include station amenities with kitchens and bath facilities. Based on some of the discussions, that was reduced out of the project. There's a common kitchen area that's used at this point, and that isn't a twenty-four seven operation and isn't planned for one in the immediate or short-term future. When that does occur, we're going to have to look at a number of what facility needs would have to be accommodated with that. But at this point, what we're looking to do is to provide proper housing of the vehicles that are used on that second truck, which is a twelve-hour operation. Right now, that vehicle has to come back to the Public Safety Building on a nightly basis during cold weather to protect the medications that are resident to the truck as well as to allow it to be properly stocked for use. So we've got a number of things that are going on with emergency medical services.
Steve, I just had a question. When we bought the new Rescue in two thousand and twelve, did we know that it wasn't going to fit in the south station? Or was that something that we anticipated would be, that project would be done before we bought it?
I don't recall what Mike's specifications were. My recollection is that the truck had to be modified so that it would fit within that building itself. I think he also, the most recent purchase, may have gone with a, with a standard size, assuming that the new garage space would be available when that vehicle became the backup and was shifted down from primary to secondary. But I'd have to look back to his records on that.
So the Rescue that we have now that doesn't fit in the building, at night it gets brought to the police station?
Yes, it is.
And what is it during the day?
During the day, it's, it's continued to operate. It's, it's in an idle position to ensure that it's heated, heated properly during the time that they're using that vehicle.
So it runs during, for the twelve-hour shift?
Yes, it does. Well, it runs during the time that it's on station, yes.
And when do you think that we'll get the, you said you, the plans are being drawn up to expand that garage so that it fits in there?
It depends on how long it takes us to get the architect designs finished. What we had to do is to modify the contract because the initial project that he put out, we're now negotiating what the fee increase is going to be to split that project out that we've already done.
Okay, and that's why we don't see it in the capital improvement plan because it's all kind of tentative right now?
Because the money's available in the, in the current reserve fund, there's no reason to bring it into the sixteen seventeen year. It's part of the fifteen sixteen year right now. That's the beauty of using the capital reserve funds. Once the dollars are assigned there, they're not going back to fund balance at the end of the year and then being necessary to be re-appropriated.
Okay. I'm just, I guess I am concerned that the, so where's the Rescue housed or garaged in the previous four years? I know, I think for a time, it was shifted to the town hall and then to the Public Safety Building. So it hasn't at any time been in a garage or had a space to fit in?
I really don't know whether it spent any time in the garage. I mean, maybe Bill could answer that question.
It just seems strange that we purchased a vehicle four years ago that didn't have a space to protect it from the elements. And was it running for the twelve hours for the four years previous to that? Because I just wonder how that would affect the vehicle.
I mean, I'm not, I don't know about the EMS program, but I walk by the door every day, and for quite some time, there's been a Rescue in that, in the bay. Now, I don't know if the Rescue that was in there is down right now, but, you know, most of the time, there's a Rescue in the bay.
Okay, so it's, most of the time, it's not outside then?
Most of the time, it's not. But again, maybe there's a recent change in the vehicle, I don't know, but, I mean, I walk past that-
And again, we were buying modified vehicles to be able to accommodate the height. Whether there's new vehicles that wouldn't meet that requirement, I can't say offhand.
I just worry that we've had a, I want to make sure it wasn't like idling for twelve hours a day for four years, because I can't imagine that wouldn't be good for a diesel engine.
No, and actually, we went and raised the, we put an outside coiling door on to give as much room because the old doors were the typical garage doors. So we increased the door height. I mean, you know, there's not a lot of room.
Yeah.
They can get in, at least, you know.
We recognize they're only going to be running during inclement weather, you know, either very cold conditions or very hot conditions. It's not twelve months of the year.
Okay, so it doesn't need to like maintain a certain temperature, just when it's really hot or really cold?
Any other questions? The budget summary is on fifty-five, moving into the Communications Division, and that's on pages forty-four and forty-five of your doc. As I mentioned in the narrative on page forty-five, the concerns that we have at this point is that we're servicing a public fire safety alarm system with a system which is antiquated. And we're going to need to make substantive changes there. Rather than go forward without having a necessary study, what our recommendation is in the first year is to spend twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty of it would be new money, to be able to evaluate the existing systems and be able to look at what best management practices should be implemented, whether that's a replacement of the existing system and then how to replace the system. And then what cost does that generate for the business community that is required by state code to be tied into the alarm system, as well as what benefit does it provide for them in terms of greater technology and sophistication of the systems and the self-testing? Some of these systems themselves are able to self-test so that there's no monthly testing requirements that are necessary. So we need to be able to study that. We also need to deal with vehicle replacements in two thousand seventeen eighteen. And we assume that if we migrate to a radio alarm box system from the cable system, that will have headwork costs at the dispatch center itself. We're also looking at the need for radio enhancements and interoperability in terms of dealing with the eight hundred megahertz system that's used with, for public safety purposes. So overall, we're looking at defining about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in needs. And once we get the study done, we can determine really what that five-year going forward cost will actually be. At this point, you know, some of the preliminary estimates, I'm not, I'm not sure that I would use them because I think there's a number of things that need to be studied and determined how we're going to proceed rather than just talking about what the equipment needs are. But the equipment needs are something that would affect not just the municipal buildings but would also affect the commercial users of the system for the direct tie-ins to the police station that are necessary to meet code. But that has to be studied. This was a need that's been brought to my attention. One of the other things that we're dealing with is the street box system throughout the community. I had a review done and found that a number of them were inoperative. Those have been directed to be removed, and we will be moving away from the box system. In today's technology and the availability of cell phoning, I think the, I had an evaluation done, study done to how many times those boxes have been used over the past five-year period, and I think it was limited to crank pulls were what we had rather than reporting an actual incident. So there's not a need to maintain that system. I've directed those to be removed from service that are inoperative and to start weaning the rest of that system down if, in fact, there's, there's problems. A lot of water intrusion into the copper lines. That means that during inclement weather, we have, have some problems as far as system use. So we're going to need to look at how do we provide that infrastructure that's necessary for the community and at whose cost. Going forward with the town hall facility, this is a, an open items list as far as town hall. One of the things that we need to look at is there's a number of offices that the carpeting in those offices has become very worn. Some of the heating systems need to be upgraded. We've got certain areas. I stopped to see Trish today, and she had gloves on.
I was working.
But it, that office really, I mean, it was about fifty, fifty-eight degrees, I think, in there with a supplemental heater. So some of the stuff is going to need to be adjusted. And, you know, some of the things that have been asked about was HVAC in this room, which has some sizable costs associated with it. We're looking at the parking lots as to, if you recall, last winter, we had frost heaves there that were quite large. Whether or not we can look at a change, there may be something that comes with the project for High Street that could involve the parking lots, and I've got to get a briefing on where we stand with that. But all of these things, this is a highly-used building, probably two to three nights a week as well. We've got to have proper lighting, and we've got to have proper temperature controls within the building. And as I say, I think it's also important for us to give people a proper workspace to be able to operate. Peace Dale Library, there's no cost on this item, but last year, we had a water dam problem that compromised the fire alarm system, actually destroyed the fire alarm system in the building based on intrusion of water in, between the wall into the system. What we're looking at is using fifty thousand dollars through the Hazard Memorial Building Trust to be able to address the most serious problems that we've run into with the ice dams. The other concern is that one of the more serious areas was right near the main entry into the building. We had an icicle that was probably about fifteen feet long. If that thing would ever fall on somebody, it just has to be, we've got to deal with that problem. So Hazard Memorial has the funding available, so we're going to move that project along. It most likely will be done this summer. Water meter replacement, I've already mentioned that, there's about thirty-three hundred meters, about a one point one million dollar cost. It's within the unassigned balance. $1.1 million cost. It's within the unassigned balance or retained earnings within the water fund itself. We go to the pay-as-you-go items and we're back to John. The first item on page, on 62 is the proposed $650,000 2016 year. And that's for the five projects that we've already talked about, full depth reconstruction, the overlay, TMDL implementation, Sagatucket River Culvert, which is the drainage issue, as well as the Mattoonik Beach Road erosion enhancements that are necessary. When we look at the road improvement program, John's explained about what we've done in the past five years to eight years, what the type of construction is for the full depth on slide 65, as well as what the best management practices are that we're looking at in terms of road surface. And when we get to the full depth, the first slide 66, the picture tells, tells a story as to what, what it is that we have to deal with. This is a picture of Moonstone Beach Road between Old Post and Route 1. Certainly, there's not a develop, a lot of development on that road, but it's a connector through Gravelly Hill to get to Route 1. This road is in need of reconstruction. We're talking about, about $286,000 in projected cost for that 2,300 linear feet. I think council's well familiar with how that road, how that, this road construction project is going. And one of the, the latest illustrations is Sagatucket Road from, from Route 1 down. That was a mix where we did both overlay and we did some of the areas with full reconstruction. We look at the pavement management, as I mentioned earlier, the less expensive is about $40 a linear foot to $90 on the reconstruction. When we look at the pavement overlay, we're looking at Mattoonik Beach Road. One of the things that needs to be corrected on this road is the detention basins that are in the road surface itself. They're too low. But they still have to be below grade to be able to accommodate the, the drainage flow. But that road needs to be properly recrowned. And we're expecting with that a, a cost of approximately 282. John, you want to walk through the next roads?
Charles Street and Cherry Lane over near Belmont. Those will likely get cold-plained. We have a machine coming in and cold-plating the road because we don't want to lift the road too much up there. We'll tack coat it and then put an overlay on. And then the southerly end of Barbara's Pond Road, the northerly end is still gravel. We're not proposing to change that. But the southerly end needs, again, an overlay treatment. The next slide is TMDLs, again, what we talk about, but I just threw that in. That's the new fish ladder, which, I know, I don't want to get off the subject, but the old fish ladder, the entry was right at the bridge, so the fish would swim by. It gets stuck at the toe of the dam. Now the entry's up at the toes, so the fish will have to go up that way and make it on the road without the volunteers lifting them over anymore. So again, TMDL, we're focused on now, river right now. One thing that I wanted to mention, even though we were progressing with design, there's some snafus that we ran into. We teamed with Fish and Wildlife. One of the drainage outfalls that empties onto the John Chaffey Preserve and they found positive archaeological. So even though we want to go ahead and get a lot of this stuff done, we're finding it to be problematic because, you know, Native Americans were near the rivers. So that's something else that we're all trying to deal with at this point, which we didn't expect. So even though we're trying hard to get some of these structural BNP's in, some of them may not be possible because of archaeological issues.
In addition to the, to the fish ladder being installed, there was also a low, low-flooded water chamber that was reconstructed. So that Public Works will have the ability to be able to manipulate the elevation of the water in that river. I think it's not something that's ever been used. The, the low-flow device had been in place for them to be, but the wearers had been missing. So that's been constructed closest to the parking lot of the, the housing facility.
Orthopedic.
Doctors' facility there. And that whole installation is quite interesting to take a look at in terms of the improvements that they made. And what's fortunate is that dam belongs to the town of South Kingston and all of these improvements were made through third-party sources. If they had not come forward, we had a compliance order that would have required us to spend considerable money on this. So John was quite successful in terms of being able to get this, this work done through those sources.
And the low-level outlet, it's also going to serve another purpose. It's for the outmigration of the juvenile al wives that come downstream. So it's, it's going to serve a secondary purpose as well.
I had a question about the Mattoonik Beach Road project.
Yep.
I know that we were having some issues with, was it getting a right-of-way or some, an easement on a property so that we could address drainage? Was that from Mattoonik Beach Road? Or was that another street I'm thinking of?
No, that's Gary Brown Farm.
Oh, thank you. Okay, never mind then.
And, and that's still underway. We're working with the, the property owners and the land trust at this point on that issue.
Okay, Sagatucket River Culvert, when we have very high precipitation events, I'm thinking more in terms of that March of 2000, that road will overtop. It's primarily due to a backwater condition where the flow can't pass down gradient of the culvert. So one thing we considered doing was enlarging the culverts. But if we do that, we have to do what's called a hydrology and hydraulic analysis because you can't pass more water at an upstream restriction because it's only going to adversely impact downstream. So you'd have to start really at the north end of Point Judith Pond. So all we're proposing to do here is to try to widen the width of the culvert to get rid of that restriction. If you go out there, the guardrail gets pretty beat up where people, you know, are trying to, you know, make it through and not doing their best to drive. We do have possible funding through the, the Ride Dot just completed a road safety assessment, and this was one of the areas in town that they flagged as, you know, requiring geometric improvement. So we believe that Ride Dot may fund the widening of that road at that point. The only downside is if we, to widen it, we're going to have to fill. And when you fill within the wetland area, you have to create another, remove material so there's no change in the hydrology. So it's a little bit of a permitting issue, but it looks like we're going to get some funding from Ride Dot. Mattoonik Beach Road sheet pile wall.
Well, this $20,000, that's in next year's budget, which is for maintenance of any of the improvements that are made at Mattoonik Beach Road for the sheet, in the sheet pile area. When we got the coastal ascent, we committed to being able to provide ongoing sand replenishment as necessary. So this will be a continuing item as we go forward. There'll be a reserve fund. If we don't spend all of it in one year, it'll be held because if we have major storms, there'll probably be major costs that'd be associated with this. I will put on the record that we've got another problem that's surfaced with the sheet pile wall. The contractor that was secured and that the contract was issued to Hugo Key has been forced into bankruptcy. We have met with the receiver and the bonding company that's responsible for that contract. And we're attempting to determine what, what next steps will be taken. I believe that what we will attempt to do is to have that receiver assign a construction company that would have to be subject to our approval. A lot of it depends on what those costs would be and how those costs would be managed through that receiver. But we will continue to work with that issue. And it'll have to go through a bankruptcy court at this point. We assume that, 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 you know, the company is not going to be restructured to be able to do that job, but they still have responsibilities to us. What those are, are subject to negotiation at this point with legal counsel and staff. But I do want to note that for the record at this point. But this is money subsequent to construction.
Steve, how much money have we allocated to that project, if any, at this point?
Well, the engineering that's been done on the project is, how much, John?
To date, I think it was about 80, I think.
80 to $100,000 have been spent, spent on that. But the contractor himself, it spent a lot of engineering money as far as prepping for construction. So that money shouldn't be lost because the engineering work that was done could be used by a different construction company. So that, that shouldn't have a plus cost to it. So, but again, a lot of the, the devil is in the detail in dealing with these things. But it's just one more step that is going to be necessary in terms of resolving that issue for the community.
How do you, oh, sorry. Okay. How did, how do you expect that to affect the timeline as far as waiting for bankruptcy court and whether or not another construction company's assigned to it?
We're not sure yet. Right now, the, we also have to deal with DOT because this entire project is to be paid for with, with federal DOT dollars. Those dollars can't be reassigned without the approval of the federal government. They can't be used for any other purpose either. So it's a case where we've got a number of different parties that are going to have to come up with agreement. Whether that can be done in short term really depends on the, on the participants and what the bankruptcy court decides to do. But you know, we're, we're continuing to move as if we can have a spring construction. But obviously, this has changed that, the potential for the, for a change in the time schedule is there. Moving on, as far as John's equipment needs, what we're looking at is about 266,000 net. On page 72, we're looking at about 115,000 coming from the reserve fund. This is money that's been appropriated in prior years, as well as reimbursement from DEM on the new sweeper that they purchased with us. When you look at the different items that we're looking for direct payment on in the 2016, 17 year, they're shown on page 73. And then on page 74, we start with the first item, $27,000 to replace one of the SUVs. That's got 2007 vintage, that's 121,000 miles. We're looking at a pickup truck that needs to be replaced with 87,000 miles, 2007. A lot of the equipment that, that needs to be replaced is based on adverse weather conditions that they're working in. The amount of salt and sand has a very destructive force on a lot of our equipment. You can see on slide 76, with a medium dump, this is a 2002 International with only 69, over 69,000 miles. It'll cost 165 to replace. But what we've got is a great deal of fatigue, metal fatigue resulting from the, the salt environment that it has to operate in. The large truck, we're looking at that being replaced in 2018, 19. We're looking at, this is the second of a five-year program to fund it because the cost of this truck is, what was the estimate, John, around 250?
Yes, yeah.
So for 1670, we, we'd set aside 30,000.
Steve, when we replace these vehicles, do we trade them in or do we, I mean?
We trade them.
No, we trade them.
Okay.
The, the next item is the street sweeper. This would, we traditionally use two sweepers. As we go forward, we're required with TMDLs to be able to do the street sweeping of all of our streets on a yearly basis. That can't really be accommodated in the time period that's necessary from the time that we stop putting sand and salt on the road till we get into the summer months when people are complaining that the, the road is still in dismal condition. What we're looking at is the replacement of the second sweeper. And we're looking at a multi-year schedule. And we would purchase that, that sweeper in 1718. There's 120,000 that would be pay-as-you-go money for the 16, 17 year. Last item, which isn't really within the equipment schedule, but is an item that needs to be replaced, is the boiler in the highway department. And we're looking at that boiler replacement in 1617 for about $15,000. Is there any questions on John's items? If, if not, as far as the public safety program, I think I've already run through the major elements. Vinnie, unless you have items that you want to bring forward? The slide 80 shows where the, the allocation would be. 25 into the reserve fund for computers, 10 for the communications equipment and 15 for the building. We have multiple schedules. I won't bore the council with them for each of the different items that are there. But again, the reserve funds are to have the dollars available on an as-need basis to, to take care of the equipment when it needs to be replaced. The anticipated equipment replacements for computers, we're looking at workstations and peripherals. That's the $25,000. The communications equipment on 82, again, the same items that we talked about earlier that need the reserve funding set aside, and the 15,000 for the building. Public safety for the EMS program, we're looking at $155,000 in 1617 for two program components. One is the, is the stretcher and mount assembly. As noted on the slide and in the budget document itself, the new sl, the stretcher and mounting system will improve patient safety as well as safety of the personnel. We're looking at the 2016 year for a $40,000 item for, for that purpose. The, we're also looking at a defibrillator. The defibrillator, that's on 87, slide 87. This is the first of a two-year program for us to set aside the money. It's not that we need it today. It, it'll be necessary in the 17 year for the replacement, 1718 year for replacement. And the paramedic one vehicle is to be replaced in the 1617 year. Last year funding on that is 105,000. The forecasted prices are between 190 and 210,000 dollars on, on the vehicle. We'll, we'll have 190 directly over the last two years that's set aside. If it comes in higher than that, we'll have to use some of the monies that are in the reserve to accommodate that, that need. The alarm system, we've already talked about it. First year is the study, 20,000 in pay-as-you-go money, 5,000 from the fund balance of the reserve fund for communications equipment. The general government items, we've got the memorial inscription. And as I mentioned to you at the last meeting, hopefully, if we have a good winter, we can get this done during this fiscal year and that can be removed from the budget. IT needs are about $35,000. And those are defined in the pay-as-you-go section. And that would, if there's no questions on those, I'll take you to the utility funds. Again, as I mentioned earlier, utility funds, everything is paid through rate base itself. None of it comes out of the property tax. Each of the funds are set up as enterprise funds. For the water fund, we're looking at five different projects, pictures of the water tower, the pump station and so forth. As we move through on slide 94, we've got the Mattoonik Road and Victoria Lane tanks. They were last painted. They were last painted in 2005 and 2007, and what we need to do is to do some spot paints, painting at this point to take care of some of the paint fatigue that's occurred. A lot of that's based on the conditions of being close to the ocean and the amount of salt that's in the air. Those tanks go back many years, and as long as they're well-maintained, they should last indefinitely. But the maintenance is very important on them. At the pumping station at Factory Pond, the building is in need of gutters, the software has to be repaired, and there's some roofing issues that need to be addressed. Again, we're not using the pumping station actively at this point, but we're keeping the opportunity to be able to use that. For us to be able to draw water from that resource would probably cost between a million and a half and $2 million in a water treatment plant that would be necessary for us to be able to draw the water. It's still economical for us to be able to continue to buy all of the water supply that's necessary through United Water. If there becomes a problem as far as resource availability, then we'll have to look at whether or not there's state funding that could accommodate being able to allow a million gallons a day to come out of the ground here than out of that other resource area. But that's something down the road at this point. As far as the resource availability through United, it continues to be there, and it provides greater efficiency as far as what our cost of water production would be. If we can, if we had, you know, grant dollars to be able to put that type of facility in, I think we could entertain that proposal, but without those third-party funding, this would be a major undertaking for a water system which has, you know, about 3,000 accounts. We're also looking at continuing efforts for leak detection. I know this is one of Meg's favorite projects.
Sorry. That's a thorn in my side.
Every year she yells at Lucian that he needs to do more to take care of the leaks, but Lucian's doing a great job for us. In fact, they found a major leak that was addressed in Middlebridge that has seen some good results for us. In fact, we were forced to go to court, and we spent municipal money on private property to lay a new water line on a structure that if we didn't make the efforts ourself, we were losing more money in value than putting the improvement in, and then we placed a lien on the property so that when that property changes hands, we'll be reimbursed for that cost. But leak detection's a major concern.
It's like the Newport Bridge, you know, once you're done painting, you've got to go back and start over again, so this is an every-year thing. It's not to say we don't have a leak tomorrow and it jumps back up, but the good news is we have made a bunch of progress, and we'll try to be diligent to keep the rates percentages down.
As far as main replacement, one of the things John's looking at is based on the age of the system, because the South Shore system, that was installed in the late '60s, and some of the pipe goes back well older than that, because there was, I think, three different water systems, private water systems that were joined together under a water authority when that South Shore system was developed. So a lot of that piping is very old. What John's proposing is the establishment of a set aside for being able to deal with main replacements. We've been fortunate that we haven't had any major difficulties, but those main breaks would require outside service being brought in to be able to pay for those improvements. Rolling stock-wise, we've got a vehicle with only 136,000 miles on it that we would seek replacement in the 201617 year. If there's any questions, I'll take them. If not, wastewater fund. Wastewater fund, there's seven projects that we're working on. I think, you know, the council had an opportunity to visit the facility and understand some of the major improvements that are being done. That facility went online in 1976, and a good deal of the plant, major equipment components are being replaced on a timely basis. We're looking forward to about 560,000 dollars in set aside in the 1617 year. When we pay for capital improvements in the wastewater fund, because we operate a regional system, we have to do cost sharing with the town of Narragansett and the University of Rhode Island, based on what share of the system each of those communities are using. So on page 100 of the handout, you see that any of the improvements that are done at the wastewater treatment plant, we're forecasting 35.8% would be paid for by SK, Narragansett would pay 44%, and URI 19%. That's because that's the flows that are going through the plant that originate in each of those three principles. You can see with the Silver Lake Pump Station, it's processing about 65% of materials from South Kingston residents, and 35% comes from the university. Kingston Pump Station, URI's cost is 92 cents on the dollar for any of the improvements that we have there. So when we show you each of the items, starting on page 102, you'll see what South Kingston's share is of the funding allocation. John, why don't you take it from there? We're on page 102.
So the first project is, again, this is the last big generator we have. We've already replaced a generator at Silver Lake, and the generator at Kingston's being replaced as we speak. It's a large unit, it's about 500 KW, funded over three years. Again, you know, unfortunately, these generators don't run much, but when we need them, they have to be up online, so just by virtue of how old it is, it's due for replacement. The next one is commuter. We've already replaced one at the Salt Pond Pump Station is one. These are below-ground stations, is one right across from Java Madness. That work has been done, and now we've jumped over to one that's actually a pump station below grade down behind the Bacon House at South County Hospital. And this piece of equipment macerates any material that's in the wastewater preventing pump damage. This one, as we did with Salt Pond, we purchased the equipment, but our in-house staff replaces it at significant savings. The next one is the belt filter press. We put this press in back in the late '80s as a result of an order that DEM gave to, at that time was Sowas Management Corporation. We had to reduce the sludge that went to the landfill by 75% within an 18-month period. So we used to have vacuum filters, now we have these, this belt filter press, and a lot of the rotating parts are now at a point where they need to be replaced. Next one is the headworks. I think the council may remember, we just did work to the influence channel at the headworks, and when that work was ongoing, we found there was decay to the concrete blocks just due to the corrosive environment. So this is going to be the next phase to resolve some of the concrete block issues. We're also having the odor control system reevaluated to make sure we get enough air exchanges so this doesn't happen in the future.
And Liz, if you're interested, we can take you through that facility anytime you want. I mean, it'll take us about an hour and a half, two hours, but council's been through, so they've seen a lot of the things that we're showing, the pictures of now.
Yeah, you had made that offer earlier, and I just took the holidays, it got away from me, but I'm looking forward to seeing that later.
Okay.
Next is, these are the primary treatment tanks. We've got four of them, and the way these, the tanks work is, this is the first means of treatment where you precipitate out more of the heavy material, and then also anything that's floatable is captured by, these are called flights, is chain system. And the support stanchions and the, we call it the scum trough, a floatable trough, they're due to replacement, so that's replacement of that material as well. Chemical feed building, originally, when the treatment plant was constructed, we used gaseous chlorine for disinfection. That was no longer permitted, so we had to go over to a liquid chlorine. And at that point, the DEM amended our discharge permit, so in addition to chlorinate, we also had to remove the chlorine, we used sodium bisulfate. And because we had to add these tanks and chemical feed pumps, we had to build another building down back, and that's the chemical feed building. We're getting some water intrusion through the cement block, so we need to take care of that before it gets any worse. Collection system, our wastewater division, we have our own machine, it's a high-pressure machine, and we jet spray and clean the localized collection system, which are the small diameter pipes. However, the interceptor that runs along the Sawatucket River goes down behind the Muse and out to Silver Lake Pump Station, that pipe is beyond our capabilities. We finished through a third-party contractor inspecting that, and we found a couple places where you see, and this isn't our pipe, but this is one I took off the internet, where you get some water intrusion, and obviously, because that pipe is lower in elevation than Sawatucket River, we want to eliminate this because, you know, we're processing groundwater at that point. So we have a company that comes in with a remote piece of equipment, and they can seal those joints internally while the flow is going on, so we've got to get that work done in an upcoming fiscal year as well.
When John uses the term interceptor, what he's talking about is a pressure line. With a sewer system, the local system is all gravity-fed, but the pressure system is the interceptor which is bringing the materials in from Kingston, so it's not something we're going to handle with local force.
It's a large diameter, it's 30-inch, so it's a pretty good-sized pipe.
That concludes all of the items that we were going to go with tonight. The last pages, on page 109 and 110, provide a summary of the general fund itself on the pay-as-you-go portion, and then the following pages on 11 and 12 show what the pay-as-you-go portion is for each of the six-year period. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to address any of those. Tomorrow night, we will deal with the recreation pay-as-you-go bonding programs, as well as the seniors and the impact fees. And then next Wednesday, we'll move on with the school department. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Abel.
Steve, are there any questions received from members of the council at this point?
I did have one more question. I know we've discussed snow removal equipment a few times, preliminary, just talking about investing in some of it. I don't see anything in here, you don't anticipate in the next six years needing any more snow removal equipment after the awful winter we had last year? It's all in good shape?
There's nothing that's been budgeted for equipment. We were requested by a local legislator to give her what the specs would be for a piece of equipment, and she had indicated that she would be attempting to get some type of resource assistance from the state. That was the only thing that we've done as far as reviewing what type of equipment would be useful for that purpose.
I just wasn't sure if after the last winter that we had, if our equipment was, everything was okay and wasn't damaged by, it seems like every town you hear, their equipment was obliterated last winter.
Yeah, I mean, what we typically do is we have a skid steer, but it's a wide skid steer, so what we priced out was a narrow one, which, you know, would give us greater efficiencies, and we use walk-behinds. But again, it's so storm-dependent, if we get a heavy snowfall, a long duration, followed by rain, and then cold weather, I mean, the small walk-behinds aren't going to do anything. We end up, on occasion, we have to go out with our grader, which has an articulating blade, and we'll actually go down High Street and pull the snow back out into the street, and then have to remove it. But again, I think everybody needs to keep in mind, last year, I think we had the third-highest snowfall on record, and we didn't get it from December to March, we got it from the last week of January to the first week of March. So, I mean, we had nowhere to put the snow, and that's why, that was one of the few winters where we had to start trucking it. So I think, you know, if we had more equipment, we get a winter like we had last winter, where we get that much snow in that short a period of time, it's not going to work.
Nothing will help. All right.
But I think that if your question was, how do we make out equipment-wise? We had some of the, we had damage as far as transmissions and hydraulics that went, but that's part of the operating budget that we give you on a yearly basis as far as the different types of services that are going to be required to maintain that. We're fortunate to have a very good fleet. We replace our equipment on a timely basis. The worst thing you can do is to have equipment not working and manpower that's sitting down waiting for the equipment to be available, as well as if in storm conditions, for us not to be able to get routes open. Do we have times where we'll have a truck go down, and we'll have to have a second vehicle once they finish their route, go and do it? Sure, we do, but I think as far as our equipment, we're in pretty good shape, but we are going to have the dings and bangs and the transmissions that just are going to happen with that type of operation. Snowplowing is the most difficult and wearing effort on any of those equipments, because it's pushing the entire time that it's in operation or it's in reverse, and they're driving fast in reverse if they're doing parking lots. So it's not something you want to do with a truck, but that's what those trucks are purchased for. That's why you'll see a 2007 vehicle needing to be replaced. It's carried the sand and salt for, you know, for 10 seasons.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you to you, Steve, and to the staff for putting this all together. Very impressive budget, very thorough, as always, and I appreciate everyone's hard work.
I do want to say that, you know, the presentation that we give you tonight is, you know, done principally with Colleen in my office badgering each of the department directors to get the pictures and to be able to put the document together. But a great deal of work from all of the staff goes into trying to provide you with the information so that you can make good decisions. Obviously, we're not going to have everything 100% right, but we're trying the best we can for you.
Thank you.
All right, and then I'd like to take this opportunity to invite members from the public to come up to the podium, state your name, make comments on the presentation tonight.
Good evening, council and staff. My name's Kenny Burke, 28 Southland Court. I'm here on behalf of the Healthy Places by Design Bike and Walk Committee, and I know the, first of all, Tom, Andrew, yourself and the staff have done a wonderful job, very, very thorough analysis, very detail-oriented, and it's very much appreciated, the public, we can just, you know, pick it up and read it and understand thoroughly where you're coming from. I have two comments, and I think the council's picked up on both of those items. One of them is the discussion topic from a few months ago about during excessive snow events, having a backup plan, I guess, for clearing snow and potentially removing the snow on sidewalks. So the town has a great program already in place where they, I think you call it the loop, so you really target those heavily trafficked pedestrian areas, areas around school systems. Tom, Andrew, I just heard that you reiterated that a local legislator asked for some backup on a piece of equipment. So our group simply supports that. We think it makes sense to have a contingency plan, and if there's, as you pointed out, you're always looking for those third-party funding sources, that makes perfect sense in the absence of somebody with an alternate source of fund outside of South Kingston. I think it would make sense to contemplate, I think it was about 30,000 dollars for the capital equipment for skid steer or something to that effect. I don't want to get involved with really, you know, what type of equipment your staff needs, but we think that makes sense, and it really is meant to help promote folks walking out and about town all year long. And we certainly understand that last year was an anomaly, and you most likely won't need that equipment on a regular basis.
We hope it was an anomaly.
Yes, sir. Right. And the second point was in regard to the South County Commons Bike Path. Again, kudos to the town staff for taking the lead on that project, designing it, getting the permit, and as you had articulated in your capital program, apparently, you know, there's a history there as far as securing funds, and then time had elapsed and there's a history there as far as securing funds, and then time had elapsed, and there was loss of a commitment from private property owner to make the final connection, reapplication for other funding. As far as the project itself is concerned, again, we think it's a wonderful project. South County Commons is a wonderful amenity with the town, however, it's one of those, you can't get there from here type of thing if you don't have a car. So it's, it's clearly right there, waiting to get built. You've done a wonderful job queuing up the project, and we simply support it. We have appeared before the council to support third-party funds through the Department of Transportation, through the TIP and the TAC process. We'll continue to do so. However, we are a little leery that, that, that funding might not come available. Tonight, I also heard you mention that there may be other funds through perhaps D.E.M. for another alternate source of funding, and I think that's great. At the end of the day, you know, we just love to see the project get done, and we'd like for you to consider a firm commitment, you know, maybe even just a time commitment to get the project done, if it happens through third-party funds or if it's as a backup, perhaps through town funding. We clearly would love to have other people's money fund the project, but nonetheless, the project's been designed, it's got a permit, I'm not sure how long that permit will last before it expires, but we would love to see a priority put to that project. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bob Vataba. I chair the Friends of the South County Bike Path, and again, I'd like to thank everybody's very sophisticated work here this evening. In, in terms of the, the Commons Bike Path, I, I, looking at the, at the previous TIP and the different projects that are coming forth throughout the state, I think one of the problems here is that we're gonna be down at the, toward the bottom of the list because there are already projects that have construction documents, and they're ready, ready to go to bid. So they're undoubtedly gonna be toward the top. Other projects have maybe had a study done, so at least there's a perspective of the cost associated with it, et cetera. My guess would be that this project, if it's selected by, by RODOT, that it'll take time, it'll take time, and as, as you're familiar with many projects that go through DOT, and again, we're not making a derogatory remark, but they're very complicated, and certainly, as John can tell us about the Comfort Station, there's many good stories to come forth from that, associated with the contractor. It wasn't DOT's fault, it wasn't the town's fault, it was that, by coincidence, somebody came forth that wasn't very responsible. So anyway, this can, this can drag on a long time, and I'm just worried that possibly a different administration will be in the Capitol before this might be done. So possibly, as Ken mentioned, if there are other sources, third-party sources, if we're, if we really want it built, I think it might be a good, an appropriate opportunity to look elsewhere, but we appreciate your efforts and certainly interest in the project. And again, another spur is the URI connection, and so, again, I think there's, nationwide, there's much interest in taking existing paths, connecting them to other paths, and with, with the concern of health, I think we don't realize that over the last decade or so, people have begun to realize they gotta exercise more, and so it's not only bikers, it's walkers, pedestrians, et cetera, so connecting sidewalks to bike paths and vice versa, and so forth, so forth, so there's a, a new movement to be without the cars, so we appreciate the interest that's shown here with the town.
Any other comments from the public? So in regard to that final issue that was raised with the Commons Bike Path Connector, there's like $150,000 coming from local to try and leverage state funds, is that...
Yeah, and we'll go over that tomorrow night. I've got several slides for that. And again, the time schedule of it depends on the availability of, of the dollars, or where the dollars are coming from. So we can talk about that in, in more detail, but what I had asked, and I mentioned earlier, what I had asked Vin to do in the TIP program to provide, the, the project to look better is to show local funding being available. And we can, with the amount of dollars that we have available in impact fees for rec purpose, we can do that and move it up. So the money's there, as long as the third-party money comes. It just depends on which year that's gonna happen. Either that or you're gonna come up, I mean, that entire project, I mean, the estimate, the latest estimate is, you know, anywhere from 600 to 625,000 dollars, I think. So, you know, you're looking at about a half a million dollars at least you're gonna need from, from outside sources to be able to put that in. And unfortunately, you know, the, the reality is the, the rec commission that does review what the recreation needs are sees the existing pathway as a, as a resource, and that there are some people that are partial to it being a, an earthen path rather than a paved path. So they're considering that it's a resource that's currently in active use for a purpose, and what they're trying to do is to address other needs that they see as a higher priority. You certainly can change those priorities, but again, you're dealing with what the rec commission has put forward at this point.
Yeah, and I think the $150,000 match, which would be about 25%, is certainly something that would attract DOT's attention. Do we know when the TIP is gonna be...
I mean, the applications aren't being submitted, it's the 8th of this month, I mean, we gotta get it in this week. How long that's gonna take through process? Vin, have you got any ideas on it?
The TIP program itself will be crafted next September, but I would make note that there'll be a public hearing by the Transportation Advisory Committee in these chambers on the 14th at 6:00 p.m., and people that are interested in that project, it would be very great to have them here and, and vocalize that support, 'cause I think that will help. And we are looking at this as being reasonably shovel-ready, which is a term bandied about upstate quite frequently, so I think that may make it attractive, particularly with the town's willingness to participate, kind of like on a match basis. But 6:00 p.m. on the 14th here.
Thanks, Vin. Well, I would also just like to echo what everybody else said, and thank you for putting together a thorough presentation and another budget. I mean, there's really not too many questions left for us to ask, I think. So unless there's any other comments that have occurred to people, I guess I will adjourn this meeting here at 8:55.